Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June 9th, 2014, meeting of the Burnsville Planning Commission. I would now call the meeting to order. Welcome, everyone.
Thank you, sir.
And staff. We have a full house here, it looks like. All the geniuses are here to help with a very full schedule for the evening. The first item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Any changes from commissioners?
None from staff.
All right. I would entertain a motion.
Who moved?
Moved by Commissioner Bradrick, second by Commissioner Thomas. All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Pass is five zero. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the May 27th, 2014 meeting. Any changes from commissioners?
No.
Staff?
None from staff.
I would entertain a motion.
Who moved, Mr. Chair?
Moved by Commissioner Seng, second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tahiri. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All oppose? Pass is five zero. The next item on the agenda is a continued public hearing, application for Capstone Homes for a development stage PUD and preliminary plot for 49 single-family lots to be known as Rose Bluff, located west and north of St. James Church, 3650 Williams Drive. Ms. Garros?
Thank you. So, the commission? Over here. The application before the commission this evening is for Capstone Homes. They are a new applicant relative to this particular piece of property. They have a purchase agreement on the property, which is about 25 acres of land that's located north of Williams Drive. It borders on the city of Savage and is also west, directly west of St. James Church. They are requesting a couple of things. The public hearing is for consideration of a development stage, planned unit development, and also preliminary plat. There will be a final plat, but that will be considered by the council at their next meeting, should this proceed through with Planning Commission. The PUD is based on a 48-lot, single-family subdivision. They are requesting deviations for lot size, setbacks, lot width, and then right-of-way and street width, in addition to using a different form of curb, which I will get into later in the presentation. The specific deviations are identified in the staff report. I'm not going to go through all of those, but they are identified. Also, there is quite a bit of history on this parcel, and just briefly, for the audience and for the commission, basically, this property had an environmental assessment worksheet that was done in 2008. The city council also rezoned part of the property in 2008. The north 10 acres was zoned high-density residential at one point in time. The council rezoned that, amended the comprehensive plan. The entire 25 acres now is single-family residential. And the council, in 2008, approved a concept PUD for the project. So, we'll go into that, excuse me, a little bit in more detail, but just note that there's a lot more detailed information in the report than I plan on covering this evening. If there are questions related to anything in the report, I will be happy to stand for The first thing that I would like to bring up, just for everyone, is kind of an area view of what we are looking at. The area in yellow here is the actual 25-acre site. St. James Church, which is a key player, is located just to the southeast. We've got the Henon Road neighborhood, generally in this vicinity over here. They were very active in the EAW and in the PUD concept plan. The neighborhood was involved, and we had neighborhood meetings in 2008 as well. The city of Savage border is on the west side of the property, so this would be all city of Savage. And just for reference purposes, to the northwest, this is Dan Patch Trail. There are three plats, which have been approved by the city of Savage, and they're currently under construction. We are going to talk about a little bit the utilities and streets ultimately making a connection at this point, so I just wanted you to be familiar with where Dan Patch Trail was located. In addition to that, we will be talking about street access and site distance, et cetera. There is a railroad bridge that is located in this area. It's on a hill, so you approach and then come downhill towards the east, past the project. This is the Dan Patch rail line, which currently is not being used by the railroad, but it is still an active railroad corridor. Lynn Avenue in Savage is at this location. Just want to note for Planning Commission that through this Dan Patch development, you can gain access to Lynn Avenue at this point. In addition, since the EAW and the 2008 concept plan, Scott County has installed a roundabout in this location in Scott County, so that had an impact on some of the traffic and some of the comments related to the project. The only other two things, this is Court Place. It's an existing road in Burnsville, single-family subdivision. And then we've got Judicial Road, which is probably the most well-known road, comes in approximately midpoint at the church. And Judicial Road is the location of existing sidewalk, and our future trail system is basically proposed south along Judicial Road, all the way south to the south city limits and the city of Lakeville. So, it just gives you kind of an idea of the various elements that we're talking about. In addition, the city has Kramer Nature Preserve, which is all of this area to the north. And then Sue Fisher Memorial Park is located further to the east. This graphic shows you what the council approved in 2008 as part of the concept stage PUD. Again, they changed the north 10 acres of the site, which was this, from high-density to single-family residential. At that time, before the rezoning and the concept PUD, the site could have had a development density of 197 units, or, excuse me, 197 apartment units were shown as part of the EAW, and 59 single-family lots, just on the Burnsville side of the property. The PUD deviations in general were related to lot width, setbacks, minimum lot area, and lot size ranges from 6,500 square feet to about 17,000 square feet. What I'd like to call the attention to for the Planning Commission is, in this area of the concept PUD, six single-family lots were shown. This area, right through here, this is the location of the Magellan Pipeline easement. So, the owner, the property owner, Carl Bonn, at that time, did anticipate putting lots up here. This concept PUD and the EAW were done without having wetland delineation and the level of detail that we have for Planning Commission review tonight as part of the PUD and preliminary The PUD plan is on the screen now. And what this shows, we have Williams Drive to the south, basically our single-family subdivision. Things to note, again, this is the pipeline easement here, which is about 100 feet wide. And we do know that there is an existing large wetland in this area that is part of a actually bigger complex that extends into the Kramer Nature Preserve. And then, in addition to that, there are some other wetlands, and I'll talk about those a little bit later in the presentation. What has happened in this proposed development stage PUD from the time of the concept plan is that the density has been reduced from 59 to 48 lots, so we have less homes. They're looking at lesser width for some of the lots, 65 feet as opposed to 70. However, they do also have house plans that show that they can fit within that building pad area, and therefore, that is the request. And it's not for all of the lots, it's some of the lots within the development, they're looking to go to 65 feet. They're looking to have 25-foot front and rear yard setbacks, as opposed to just the front 25-foot setback that was in the concept. The standard for the R1 district is 30 feet. The lot area minimums actually are quite a bit larger than what the concept PUD showed. The minimum lot area is just over 8,000 square feet versus 6,500 square feet in the concept PUD. The lots, the maximum size is quite a bit bigger, almost twice the size at 37,000 versus about 17,500. The average lot size for the development stage PUD as opposed to the concept is 15,600 square feet, thereabouts, as opposed to about 10,300 square feet. So, just in general, although the development stage PUD is asking for a little bit narrower lot width on some of the lots, the lot areas in general are much larger. There are fewer lots, and there is much more area for the building pads than was previously shown in the concept PUD. Couple of other things, just to note, we will be talking about these lots here in the very southeast part of the project site. These are the narrowest lots in terms of depth, and you can see they back up to the common lot line with St. James Church. Their location and their depth is really set on Rose Boulevard, which is shown here, and we'll talk a little bit about how that access location came to be. The PUD deviations, as I have identified in the staff report, are there for you. This gives you the actual unit counts that they're looking at, and with the relation between what was proved as the PUD and the single-family standard for the R1 zone. One of the things that I talked about before is they are requesting PUD deviation to use surmountable curb as opposed to the barrier curb, which is Burnsville's standard. The reason for that is that within the Dan Patch development to the northeast, the city of Savage has a standard of surmountable curb. So, that's what's being requested. We have development that's already existing and occurring in Savage, and this project, Capstone, is looking to acquire land from the owner, Carl Bonn, both from Savage and from Burnsville, so there will be situations where you'll have a north-south street, for example, with surmountable curb in Savage. The city engineer has evaluated this, and they are okay with the surmountable curb on the other side of the street to provide continuity throughout the entire neighborhood. So, that is the last PUD deviation that's requested. In terms of the preliminary plat, it's on its side here. North is to the left. We've got Williams Drive here, Rose Bluff Boulevard here, and White Rose Avenue. These are the lots. This project, although it doesn't maybe look so, actually, the development site is very complicated in order to develop, and there are a lot of restrictions on the property because of existing utility easements, city easements, and some other items that are related to the property. They are looking at, again, for the preliminary plat and 48 lots, and to give you an idea, the property that Capstone is looking to purchase is, again, both city of Savage and city of Burnsville. They're looking at developing the Burnsville side first. We've got this street here, this is that north-south street I was talking about in terms of the curb. This is Glenhurst Avenue. This is proposed to connect to existing Glenhurst Avenue, which is under development in the city of Savage to the north. Ultimately, people from this area will be able to get to Chowan Avenue to the north and to Highway 13 through this subdivision. It's kind of a circuitous route, but you will be able to actually make that connection. In addition, once the Savage side is done, there will be the ability to come up through this plat and gain access in this location on the far left to Lynn Avenue. This north-south street is the only street access that's proposed to the entire development. The applicant has made application to the city of Savage. They are currently reviewing the preliminary plat on the Savage side. The city of Burnsville is a little bit ahead of Savage in terms of the development review. There are joint utilities, joint streets, maintenance, et cetera, that are involved because we have two cities, and the city engineer is working on a joint powers agreement with the city of Savage that discusses, basically, which city will be responsible for which parts of the development, which utilities, et cetera. That joint powers agreement has been reviewed in draft form and is acceptable to both cities in terms of staffs. The joint powers agreement would actually be something that the city council will enter into as part of the project. What I wanted to note here, that this is the sheet showing existing conditions. Just roughly, you can see that the northern part of the site is wooded. There are some woods down in this area. A lot of this stuff is more volunteer, as the railroad bridge and Williams Avenue were installed, but these are some major wooded areas to the north. We've got St. James Church, the existing church that abuts the property. Then, in this area, which is the west-central part of the site, in 2011, for the Dan Patch Trail parts of the project that are located to the northwest, there was excavation, and actually, they borrowed dirt from this site, took down trees in this area, and borrowed dirt so that they could actually construct the Dan Patch Trail parts of it. So, that's why this is open the way that it is. Other things, just for review purposes, is that this is a St. James Lutheran Church. There is a 60-foot-wide right-of-way easement that the city has, which basically, it surrounds the church on all three sides. The developer is requesting, as part of their project, to have the part of the easement that is north and west of the church to be vacated, so that their lots can go up to the common property line with the church. The vacation is also an item that the city council will consider. They hold the public hearing for all vacations. There are some steep slopes on the site. You can see they're kind of the areas that are in the lighter gray. For the most part, these slopes have been already graded. This project will also include, basically, mass grading of this site. They pretty much have to do that in order to get any lots in this area, and the city council considered that as part of the concept PUD. The trade-off was that we got rid of 100 and some units of apartments for an all-single-family development. The slopes actually continue further to the east and are part of the Kramer Nature Preserve area. So, for this part of the development, it's been contemplated, at least since the 2008 PUD, that grading would occur in those areas, and the majority of trees in this area will also be cleared. This map is really just kind of a quick color overview to give you an idea of the various encumbrances on this 25-acre site. We've got the Magellan Pipeline that I've referred to before. We have overhead power lines in this location and also running north and south. This is the city's right-of-way easement, 60-foot right-of-way easement around the north. We do have an easement as well for Williams Drive to the south, and then that widens out, actually, to, I believe, it's a 50- or 100-foot wide easement in this location. And if that's not enough, there's also a gap between the legal descriptions, and the ownership of this about 33 feet in through here is not known. This happens, actually, more than we'd like to see, but basically, it's a result of when the initial surveying was done for the national surveys, and just that there's a gap in between over the years how these descriptions were paired. And the half-section map you can see clearly shows that there is a gap where the owner is not known. The developer did look at, and the city has looked at, the option to go through the court process in order to identify the ownership. This is all Torrance property that we're dealing with, so it is a very lengthy and costly process, probably takes six months to a year. And what our city attorney had advised us is that because these property owners basically have extended their yards into this area, and there are some private improvements, some gardens, some sheds, those types of things, that probably, in a hearing to assign ownership for this, that it would probably go to these property owners, as opposed to the city being able to get it. Initially, we thought the city would get it, and we could use this as part of our trail corridor. They did not believe that that would be the case. Couple of things to point out with regard to St. James Church. One thing that I wanted to show you is that their western driveway actually encroaches over the church's lot line onto the property that Capstone is seeking to purchase. This is within the 60-foot city right-of-way area here, but it is on somebody else's property. So, we've got a driveway encroachment in that location. This particular graphic doesn't show it, but about this much of this east access is also off the church's property, and it's on that 60-foot easement that the city owns. So, we have some encroachment issues there. This right here is that 33-foot gap that we talked about, and it's kind of hard to see it on here, but you can see there are mature trees in this area, and there are some improvements, gardens, et cetera, and other trees that have been planted in this area, all adjacent and part of these homeowners' properties here. This shows you the part of the easement that the city council will consider as part of vacation of that easement. And basically, you can see this blue line here shows that 60-foot easement, and these lots are shown being platted through the entire easement up to the church property line in this location. So, that's where this comes into effect. A little bit earlier, we talked about the wetlands. There are actually four wetlands on site. There are three small wetlands, which are fairly degraded. Parks and Natural Resource Commission took a look at the proposed replacement plan for the project, and they had recommended approval, basically, where these three ponds or wetlands would be eliminated, filled, but this one will remain intact, no changes to that. There is a proposed stormwater pond on the very north part of the site. It's in this location here, and as we'll look at a little bit later, there are additional stormwater ponds on the Savage site, both through here and then further to the north. One of the items that the developer is going to need to deal with, and we've added this as a condition, is that for any grading or any facilities that are shown within these existing pipeline and power line easements, they will need to get permission from the utility companies to show that they can actually do that grading work and put the utilities in those areas. So, those have been conditions that are included in the recommended conditions. In addition to that, because the Savage part of the plat is going to follow behind the Burnsville part of the plat, we have added conditions that require temporary turnaround easements and also hard surface construction, so that the lots within Burnsville and the fire department has the ability to get out, turn around, and come back, should something happen, and the Savage side of the development not occur. In addition to that, we've requested easements be provided for Glenhurst Avenue as well, and that would be to make sure that this road connection can be made to the Dan Patch project to the north. And also, there are utilities that need to be placed here and connected to existing utilities in Savage. So, that would be another condition that is requested. When we talked earlier about the deviations requested for engineering, they relate to Prairie Rose Drive, which is this central street, and they are requesting that the right-of-way and the street width be allowed to be narrower than the city's standard. And then, in addition to that, we talked about the curb already. The city engineer is okay with the request. This will be somewhat narrower, but there will be 15-foot front yard easement provided, which will give us the ability to have a sidewalk with a 5-foot green boulevard, if you will, between the sidewalk and the street or back of curb. What this allows, and we told the developer initially, that we would be willing to support, as a staff, more lot deviations and perhaps lesser right-of-way and street width, if they could look at trying to preserve, to the extent possible, the natural features. And what they're proposing to do is this entire area here is Outlet A, and we'll look at that a little bit closer, but they're proposing, basically, to give the city the deed to Outlet A, which is a larger area than our requirements would allow if we just took our standard requirements, and that does protect the wetland area. Also, as part of the EAW, we had asked for additional buffer between lots. If you remember, the other site showed lots coming right up almost to this north lot line. The Parks Department wanted to see a buffer, a minimum 50-foot buffer, to the Kramer Nature Preserve, to keep it in its natural state, as opposed to having people start encroaching and using it for fire pits and different kinds of things. The developers, basically, is providing that, so we have this entire area here. The developer will be responsible for installing wetland buffer signs along the lots that do have part of the wetland located within the lots. And in addition, the city is going to be posting signs for City Park and the Kramer Nature Preserve, so that when people are out walking or in their yards, whatever, they'll know where the boundaries are of the Kramer Nature Preserve, both to the east and to The subject site does sit within a couple of the city's environmental overlay districts. Wetlands District is one. The Planning Commission doesn't typically get involved very much in terms of the wetland replacement, but the PNRC does evaluate that. PNRC has recommended approval of the wetland replacement plan that the developer has proposed. Basically, there are some impacts to lesser-value wetlands, which are those smaller wetlands that I identified. They're looking for about half an acre of fill for those combined three wetlands, and the replacement plan does call for, they need to provide two-to-one replacement, so they are purchasing wetland credits to meet that requirement. So, the PNRC did recommend approval of the wetland replacement plan. That will be formally acted upon at the city council level. At this point, just wanted to show, this is a graphic, and there's a lot of information on here. The major things that we want to identify for you is that, again, this is the primary access road, which is Prairie Rose Boulevard. The lots are in this location. Again, just to note that this is the city's, we do have an easement over, you know, a much deeper area on this side than we do on this side of Williams Drive. What the proposal calls for is, the comprehensive plan identifies that Kramer Nature Preserve should be extended or increased in size in this general area. So, the applicant is proposing to dedicate Outlet A, and I've got a little bit better slide of that, but they're proposing to dedicate Outlet A in this location as a land dedication. In addition to that, not only does the comprehensive plan, but also Dakota County has a Greenway System Plan that was adopted in 2013, and that calls for a regional... System Plan that was adopted in 2013, and that calls for a regional, regional trail/greenway corridor to connect Kramer Nature Preserve to a larger Greenway System that actually will go all the way to the city of Farmington. This will also connect to the north to a future trail system within the landfill site, and then over to Black Dog Road, which will be, a trail will be constructed in the next year or two along Black Dog Road, which is that part of the regional system that will connect all the way to St. Paul. There also will be connections to the city of Savage. Those specific locations have not been identified yet, but there are regional corridor plans and city plans in Savage and Scott County as well. The things that this item, or that this graphic is showing, is to remove the existing west driveway access to the church. Again, there is an encroachment, about half of the existing driveway is not located on their land. So the proposal is, and St. James Church has been a very, a very positive assistance throughout this entire development. The developer has worked very hard with the city and with the church in order to come up with a plan to address all of these various issues. So they've come to an agreement that the developer will remove this west driveway, and then they will make improvements to the east driveway on this side. And those improvements show basically up here at the top, where you'll have a west and an eastbound outbound turn lanes for church. Their biggest issue is when they're, people are leaving the service, you know, just the congestion at that point, and then there will be a dedicated lane for traffic to get into the site. So in exchange for doing this and doing this, the developer is showing within their plat, providing a trail easement in approximately this location, and this will ultimately connect up to the existing trail in Kramer Nature Preserve. The reason that this is shown is this area is quite steep, and in order to meet the regional trail requirements for grade, et cetera, there are going to need to be some switchbacks that will need to be constructed in this area. The proposal is that the developer provides the easements, and they will rough grade the trail corridor. The city then will actually be responsible for the construction of the trail, and the Parks Director is looking to work with Dakota County to partner on some grants and look at developing that either next year or the following year. In addition to the developer's property, there is this area right in through here, and the developer did not want to provide a trail easement on the rear of these lots, because the lots are so shallow, and there'd be really close proximity between the back of the homes and where these trails would be. So Parks Director indicated that he would accept an alternate location for that, provided easements could be given for the trail. So what the proposal is, and what the church has tentatively agreed to do, is to, the church would give the city a 20-foot trail easement on the west part of their property, and then in exchange for that, the developer will remove, again, all of the, all of the existing driveway. They will construct this east driveway in through here, and the church would dedicate, or excuse me, give the city an easement to construct the trail. Again, the developer would be responsible for grading, rough grading their part of the trail within their project site. There's currently not a sidewalk along Williams Drive. Again, along Williams Drive in this location, it's very steep between the edge of the road right-of-way and the church property. So the city is working with the developer, with the county, to take a look at where the best location would be to extend this trail, whether there should be a connection, and the trail should actually cross at the intersection of Rose Bluff Boulevard and, whatever the street is to the south, Court Place, excuse me, whether it should occur in that location, whether it should occur at a mid-block location, whether it should occur in Judicial Road, where there's an existing sidewalk. There's also existing sidewalk on the south side of Williams Drive, nothing on the north side of Williams Drive. There is an option that the developer and the church have been talking about, and as I understand it, the church is agreeable to working with the developer, and that would be, the church would consider selling the developer 35 feet of their property, the west 35 feet of their property. Now, within that 35 feet, the east 20 feet would be the city's trail corridor that is needed, that would provide for a 10-foot bituminous trail, five feet of green space on either side. And then what the developer would do is, for the rest of it, for this westerly 15 feet, is they would extend the lot lines for these few lots into that area. And what we have done to accommodate that is to provide, within the conditions, an option that if the developer is able to purchase that property, that they would be able to incorporate this. They will need to come in for a revised final plat to extend those lot lines, but it will not require a PUD amendment in order for them to do that. And hopefully, either way, not hopefully, but if that happens, the city would already have the trail easement in place over the westerly 20 feet. Just wanted to give you a very quick review. This is the Lake Marion/South Creek Greenway Master Plan. It's on the Dakota County website. And just quickly, part of the greenway that's anticipated, the Black Dog Road Regional Trail, as I said, will be under construction here in the next year or two. There is funding that is available for that. Then, there is a trail corridor that is provided along the PUD for the landfill. It's the future date when the landfill closes, that would continue, that would bring us up to roughly the Chowin Avenue area. And then, this trail continues south through the Kramer Nature Preserve, and then all the way through, kind of, all the way through down to Murfree Hannah Hand Park, and then also then continues all the way down to Farmington and Highway 52. So that gives you an overall view of this greenway corridor. Something that we heard at the neighborhood meeting for this is that the property owners or in the neighborhood wanted to see a local park or playground within the development. The current comprehensive plan, park plan and trail plan, does not call for any additional play areas or active recreation areas in this part of the city. However, there are a couple of things that could possibly modify that. The Parks Plan is quite old, and the PNRC is going to be working within the next year or two to revise that plan and update it. There is a possibility, if the neighborhood is still interested or really wants to see something, that they can work with the Parks Director and PNRC to possibly look at providing something within this area. In addition to that, this greenway plan does show both a trailhead, which would actually be on the landfill site, but it does also call for a small gateway in the nature preserve. Doesn't currently show playground equipment, but that may be a possibility, again, to look at. The greenway plan is just that, is a greenway concept plan. There are not specific dollars that have been set aside to accomplish this yet. They're still in the process of working that out, but it would most likely be joint ventures between city developers and Dakota County. Oops. No, good. That's nice. There you go. This is just a little bit bigger picture of that, showing the nature preserve coming through, and again, connecting to Judicial Road. The preferred alignment for this would be along the railroad corridor, should the railroad ever give up the corridor. We don't know if that's ever going to really happen, so kind of as an alternate, we've got the Judicial Road alignment on the current, current trail and sidewalk and area that's adjacent to Sunset Lake further to the south. Park dedication, we talked about. Outlet A is this area that's identified in green, and again, this will be added to the larger Kramer Park Preserve. Their park dedication requirement is 1.3, about 1.4 acres of land. They're proposing over 3.6 acres. That does include part of the wetland, but that's only 0.44 percent, so it is about twice as much parkland as is required. And this does accomplish the major objective of providing for corridor, trail corridor to connect Kramer Nature Preserve to Williams Drive and then points beyond. Sidewalks within the development, just quickly, proposed sidewalks along Glenhurst Avenue. These do align with sidewalks in the Dam Patch Trail Project to the north. There's also sidewalk proposed along the north side in this location of Prairie Rose Way. This will connect to a sidewalk proposed in the city of Savage. And then there would also be sidewalk from this point down to the intersection with Williams Drive. Like I said, the city engineer and Parks Department, they are looking at, with the Traffic Control Committee, the best location for how this trail can cross Williams Drive. The applicant will probably go over this in a little bit more detail, but they did provide some architectural guidelines with the PUD. The specifics are outlined in the report. Just wanted to show you some of the examples that they have. Capstone will be probably the prime builder, however, they may not be the only builder within the PUD. They may also work with other builders as well. Just some of the items that they have indicated in their architectural concepts, I'd look at all of the units having some type of front porch, 25 percent of the front elevation with some brick, stone shakes, different sidings. Also, garage piers to be stone or brick, 36 inches in height at a minimum, decorative garage doors. They are looking at 812 roof pitch, which is a fairly steep roof pitch for some of the areas, and then elsewhere on the homes would be a 612. These give you some more examples. Capstone is a builder. They do have some units built in the city of Savage, and the applicant can discuss that a little bit further with you when they get to that point. The second overlay district that the project is located within is our woodland overlay district. I showed you primarily where the woodland areas are, and they will, except for anything located within the park area and within the, I believe everything has been taken out of the pipeline easements as well in the past couple of years. They are looking to remove 69 percent of the tree cover that's within the 25 acres that they have. The R1 District in Burnsville, you can remove up to 40 percent before it kicks the threshold for replacement of trees. In this case, they are going to need to provide for some tree replacement and restoration. That is calculated at 1.5 times what the removal is. So their entire restoration value is over $67,000. In their landscape plan, that we'll show you in a minute, they are proposing a little over $58,000 in terms of tree replacement throughout the development. So a condition has been added that the balance of their tree replacement, about $9,400, would need to be provided. The landscape plan is provided here. So you can see the area which all of this would have been removed had the concept plan been able to be developed. They are preserving all of, all of the woodland area in through here, and then also along the part of the park. In addition to that, they are providing for the minimum tree planting requirements, which is two trees per front yard, four trees on a corner lot, but they do have additional plantings that they're showing in other areas as well, to the south in this area, in this area, probably an entry feature type of development, and they may also do some additional landscaping in some of these lots to provide some separation from the trail. In terms of the proposed landscaping, the only condition that we have is that the city engineer is able to take a look at and approve the locations of anything that's proposed within an easement. Now we get to the detail stuff that, I'll give you an overview, and if you have specific questions, our illustrious Brian Hill, Brian is here and can help with that. They are putting in utilities, streets, utilities, storm sewer, is all proposed as part of the development. Basically, they are making connection, north is to the top of the screen, making connection in this location. You can see the stormwater pond that's proposed with overflows to some ponds that will be built in the city of Savage, and there's also some existing development to the north as far as the, the storm sewer system. For sanitary sewer, we do have a condition, a couple of conditions that are included. One of those is that there be a joint powers agreement that is executed between Savage and Burnsville, and that's for the maintenance and installation, cost sharing in terms of snowplow, the pipes, the infrastructure, et cetera. We indicated that sewer does need to connect with Savage in the northwest part of the plat. There is a, there will be a looped water system. The water will connect with Savage, so that in case there are emergencies, Savage would be able to use some of the city's water supply, but otherwise, pretty much would be doing that on their own. Another condition that is recommended relates to water pressure, and there's very high water pressure in this part of the city, so that people are aware that they will need to install pressure-reducing valves in all homes in this area, so that they don't have problems with their water systems. This is the proposed storm sewer. Again, details Brian can help you on. There will be storm sewer, there's ponds, and there's wetlands. Storm sewer constructed in the streets. There are some large, and I'm not sure if they're shown on here, they show up better on the preliminary plat, there are some large drainage and utility easements. This area has got a large drainage and utility easement back in through here, and then also along the north and through here as well. I think we've talked about all of these things, joint powers agreement, and we did include in the staff report information about the Sunset Pond Dam, and that is a project that the city worked on years ago, and actually to help manage surface water, installed a drain which created Sunset Lake. That dam, because it's a man-made feature, you always have to consider what happens if it should fail, or if there's a larger storm event than the dam was planned for. There was an analysis that was done, again, Brian can address the details of that. Basically, if something were to happen to that structure, were to fail for some reason, there would be a large amount of water that would outflow towards this development. Everything's downhill to the, to the development site. The plan does show, however, that the lots within Burnsville would not be impacted. The lots within Savage could be impacted. That information has been shared with the city of Savage, and the developer is working with the city to look at ways to address that situation in their part of the project The final plat is basically to plat all of the lots, with the exception of these six lots that are located in the southwest part of the plat. These lots all front on future Glenhurst Avenue, so there is not going to be any access to these sites until the Savage part of the project develops. At that point in time, the developer will come back in with a final plat and plat these six lots in this location. For Williams Drive, just a couple of items. The primary comments that came up in 2008 with the concept plan, and then also this time in terms of the neighborhood meeting, was really concern about Williams Drive, the amount of traffic and the speed of traffic along there. The amount of traffic and the speed of traffic along there. The comprehensive plan does classify Williams Drive as a minor arterial. So it is supposed to carry a large amount of traffic. I believe that the speed is 45 miles an hour on this road. A minor arterial is intended to move all the traffic that comes off of the freeways, Highway 13, County Road 42, et cetera, those bigger facilities through to other larger traffic carriers. So it is meant to carry quite a bit of traffic. That being said, however, there is also the ability on minor arterials to put in street access locations. And the access location that was chosen for this site is different than the concept PUD. The concept PUD showed a street coming out on the east side of the church. That is not possible for a number of reasons which I cited in the report. Primarily, we don't have the right of way for it. And two, kind of creates the same situation because there's no street to have an intersection across from the east entrance, just as there isn't for the west entrance. So there was a traffic study that was required for this project. And the city's traffic engineer, our consultant, did take a look at this and had concurred that the best location for the access to the neighborhood would be directly across from Court Place. So that's where the intersection, that's how that came to be. It was reviewed to obtain the best site distance, especially from coming over that railroad bridge. That will hopefully be improved as well because the other, the Church West access drive will be removed. We'll have an intersection that's across from an existing street. And then in addition to that, there is a proposal to actually expand the center turn lane that's on Williams Drive from its current location, which ends around the vicinity of Judicial Road, to actually extend that further to the west and beyond the access for this development. That will allow for left and right-hand turns and improve the situation above what is there today. However, that being said, it is still a minor arterial. And there still is a high amount of traffic and the speed is relatively high. This again is just, you know, just the overview. You can see that the design for, or the bridge is relatively close. But this access is just about as far from this location as it can be. And that's why that was chosen. And there will be only the one access. And like I say, this access will be removed and this access will be improved. This is the graphic, kind of hard to see on here. But basically, this is the existing turn lane. Comes out to not quite half of the church property is where that ends. This would be Judicial Road in this location. Then on the one to the south, this is where the striping for that center line, or excuse me, that center turn lane is extended further to the west. This would be the access into the development. Court Place to the south and then Judicial Road in this location. The last part is just to talk about a little. We did provide some information, answer some questions at the neighborhood meeting for the property owners. And there are some concept plans in the county greenway master plan that talk about how they would like to see this greenway developed. And as I indicated before, the determination hasn't been made yet in terms of where that trail crossing will be. It's possible it could be at Court Place where the road comes out. Possible it could be mid-block. Possible it could be at Judicial. Really, further analysis needs to occur to make that determination. And that will be forthcoming here, probably in the next couple of months. The greenway plan does call for at-grade and mid-block crossings. And some of the types of things that the traffic committee is taking a look at are how can we provide for a better crossing, a safer pedestrian situation in this area? It may be that there is some electronic signals that would be installed similar to what were installed by the Fairview Ridge's church. It may be a combination of many things. This is, I'm just providing this because it is a concept that was discussed as part of that whole greenway plan. And they do know that there are issues that need to be addressed. Neighborhood meeting was held on May 21st. There were about 15 people there, probably evenly distributed between people who had questions for the Savage City Planner and the applicant in Burnsville. As I indicated, they were concerned about additional vehicle traffic. There will be 105 new lots that are proposed within the development. And until the Savage side develops, the access will be Rose Bluff Boulevard. And however, that will get better when that connection is made Glenhurst to the north. Because then at least there will be some alternate routes out of this development and for the neighborhood. One of the things didn't come up this time, but it did come up during the concept plan review, is the Henon Road neighborhood did not want a street to be connected to their local street. And this project accomplishes that. There are no street connections that are made to that development. People will be able to get out to the trail system, but there won't actually be a street connection. Williams Drive, we talked about that. Some of the intersection items will need to be looked at. There is currently not a sidewalk on the north side of Williams Drive. And residents indicated that they would like to have a sidewalk installed. That would be something that we would take a look at probably as part of the Trails Master Plan update, potentially with this, as they look at where the crossing should be and what type of improvements should be looked at. And we talked about the desire for a neighborhood playground. Talked about a little bit, some of these things for the gateway concept are included in your report. Staff is in support of the PUD as proposed and the preliminary plat. We believe that it's consistent with the concept PUD. It's consistent with the comp plan and zoning. The density is further reduced from what it was in 2008. They are providing the additional buffer between where the building pads will be located and Kramer Nature Preserve. This is something that was desired during the EAW. They have home styles and architecture that all exceed the city's minimum requirements. They have worked very hard. And the church has been really a great help and partner in this, I think, between the city, the developer, and the church to try to come up with plans that are win-wins for everybody involved. This project would end up removing the driveway encroachments for the church, which helps them in terms of their title. And also gets rid of an additional turning area that was never really planned or approved in terms of the Williams Drive. It does provide for local and regional trail connections, which are again, objectives of the comprehensive plan and also the county. They've addressed all of the EAW issues that were raised in 2008 and which I think there were probably, I'm going to guess 25. Could have been more, probably not less. But there were a lot, so they've addressed all of them. Our recommendation is to approve the PUD and preliminary plat subject to the conditions that are provided in the report. I did identify, got like three or four slides where it kind of paraphrased what the conditions are. Won't read through all of those. I tried to identify those as we went through. So with that, I can stand for questions. I do know that the applicant would also like to address the planning commission that has a short presentation as well.
Thank you, Ms. Garros. Questions? Anybody like to start?
Just a couple.
Sure. Mr. Frederick.
Deb, with the Outlet A and the future path and the kind of missing 33 feet, who owns that?
Yep.
I thought I could tell from the plan that that extra 33 feet does go back farther than just the church property.
Yes.
It does go back. So does that pose a problem for us down the road with the trail? Because the trail is going to cross this land that nobody seems to own.
The city attorney didn't believe that it would be because the city owns parkland on both sides. So in that northern part, they didn't think there would be an issue. But in the southern part where we've got the private, single-family lots, there they thought that a decision would go toward the residential owners as opposed to the city.
And with Outlet B, when it's platted, I'm assuming the joint powers agreements will allow us to reciprocate back and forth with utilities? So somebody isn't going to be living in Burnsville but having to pay water? How will they, will that work? I mean, we could probably get a way to make that work fairly cleanly for the landowners?
Actually, I will let our public works director.
I asked a question and we got a new speaker.
New guy to answer that.
Mr. Commissioner, I'll answer very briefly. Yes, the JPA will actually set it up. So the water bills and sewer bills will actually be billed to Savage to those residents. They'll be receiving sewer, water service, all their utility services from Savage, actually, from the street. And so we will set the agreement up to allow for that. It would be kind of a confusing agreement to have us bill them and have to work through Savage and such. So we felt that that would be the cleanest. We do have authority under statute to do it that way. We thought that would be the cleanest way to do it. Even though they will still be Burnsville residents, however, the street will be plowed by Savage. So those types of things will be addressed in the agreement, too.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Deb, the good faith agreement that was in our background with the church, their final statement was that they preferred to not have the trail go in front of the church. And I know that is a bit of an issue trying to get back to judicial. Do they understand we've got some challenges there and?
Yes. Ryan has spent time, our city engineer, spent time talking with church officials. And we, the city does have an existing easement over part of the church property. And we should be able to construct everything if need be within that easement and not require additional land. The concern for the church is they do have at least one tree and some other improvements in that area that they would really like not to be disturbed. The tree, I believe, was part of a donation memorial. And definitely the city, you know, does not want to get into impacting that either, so.
It's, I looked like it. It looked like we could stay at that corner of their lot to get to judicial and not be really in front of what I would call the visual piece of the church when you go down Williams Drive.
Correct.
Okay. And then one last, the, I'm assuming this is correct. We've covered this in the past. The lots that are encumbered by wetlands, that'll be something that would come up in, if the homeowner does the appropriate work from a title standpoint, it'll be on the land. So when they purchase the land, they know they can't develop X percentage of it. Plus the signage that's installed?
There's that. And then also, I believe that the pipeline also is identified. So they've got the pipeline and the easement 100 feet in between pretty much where the majority of the wetland is. But there will definitely be wetland monuments posted for the development. And that's something that we will require evidence of before we issue a building permit to any of those lots.
Thanks, Deb. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Singh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Deb, just point of clarification. I gather that the developer will be using the easement that runs next to St. James Church. Is that right?
Yes. They are, actually, it's the city's easement that runs along the north and west line of the church and then back 60 feet. So that's the city's right-of-way easement. So the developer is requesting that the city vacate that easement along the church's north and west lot lines so that they can then have their lots extend to the lot line of the church. If the vacation is not approved, then the plat and the PUD would not be approved.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at. So there's still a big if there. If that is not done, then the whole thing will have to come back here?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you for clarification.
Thank you. Anybody else? Commissioner Tejiri.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Deb, could you clarify this, the easement on the north side of the property? What that easement is for? I know it indicates as utility easement, but could you be more specific what type of utility? That 60-foot? Or maybe wider?
Okay. The city has got a right-of-way easement for 60 feet all the way around, basically, the church's property and through here. The area within the blue line is an underground Magellan pipeline, so natural gas pipeline, that cuts through the property at this location. And then there are overhead Excel power lines that run kind of east-west and then north-south. And you can see the power poles in through here. So what the developer has done is they have made application for the city council to consider giving up the public's right to use the 60-foot right-of-way that is adjacent to the north boundary and the west boundary of the church. And in that vacation, that's one of the conditions that is identified, that the PUD and the plat would be subject to city council approval of that vacation. In addition to that, for the city council review, our city attorney has also recommended that there be a condition placed on the vacation that the city gets the trail easements that we need before we vacate or as a condition of vacating. Because we don't want to give up a 60-foot right-of-way where we could put a trail and then not end up with a trail.
And that blue line easement, the utility, how wide is that easement?
I believe that's 100 feet.
And that's for gas pipeline?
Gas pipeline, correct. Underground pipeline.
Part of the deviation is to reduce or vacate part of that easement or does that push?
No. There is, none of this gas pipeline easement or the power line easements are requested for any vacation.
Yes.
Would be just that right-of-way easement adjacent to the church's north and west property.
One more question. Deb, is there, if you could clarify my memory here, does church requiring any kind of a buffer between the back lot development and the church side? Or is it pretty wide open?
They are not requesting, the church is not requesting anything. There are, the developer is, has indicated that they may install some landscaping, especially on these short lots that are just west of the church, just to provide some separation for the homeowners between the public trail.
That could be bushes or trees?
Right, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. Commissioner, Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So back to the trail. So potentially, that could be the greenway corridor that the county's been proposing.
Yes.
Has the county weighed in on what we're proposing here today? As far as width and things like that? I know they have a real grandiose section on their greenway corridor.
Our Parks Director is in constant contact with them. So yes, they are familiar with this. And actually, the Parks Director and I were involved. We worked with the county when they were putting together this greenway plan and indicated that they know that this, the part of the greenway in Burnsville, such as also a lot of Lakeville, is in an urban area. So they've got, you know, different expectations for the corridor in the urban areas as opposed to where you've got an area that's not platted. In the areas that are not platted or will remain in their natural state, they're looking at 100-foot corridor minimum. But in these areas, we know that we have already got, like, existing sidewalk, for instance, along Judicial. That's our greenway. That's already there and it's not likely to be expanded. So the park director did indicate that he needs at least 20 feet because a trail needs to be at least 10 feet wide. And he's accepted. He's worked very closely with the applicant as well.
Okay. So staying on the trail theme here, I share the same concern about building a trail over land of unknown ownership. But we'll defer to the city attorney on that. I'll just share that comment. But that's. But that switchback trail coming up that Outlot A, that will be graded by the developer?
That will be graded by the developer, yes. And actually, it's shown that way. Our parks director, in talking to the county, in order to qualify for grants, it cannot exceed certain slopes and has to meet certain design standards. So that's why those switchbacks are shown. And actually, there is more land. The developer just kind of showed that within that corridor. But the city owns additional land for Kramer Nature Preserve. So it is possible that there'll be, probably that there'll be more general switchbacks than what is shown graphically.
So the final design will meet ADA requirements?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Williams Drive. To clarify, has that been turned back from the county to the city? Or is that?
Has it? Long, quite a while ago?
About 10 years ago.
Okay. Longer ago than I've been here. So longer than nine years. It is, when you get to the Savage border, it is Scott County Road further to the west. But in terms of when it gets to the border, it's been turned back and it's all city, city road.
I'm just going to continue if you don't mind.
Sure.
So to stay on trees, so the tree removal, is that kind of a net thing from the previous grading that was all taken into account?
Yes. Yes.
This is probably more for the developer's engineer, but I guess that Sunset Lake outlet and potential damage, I guess they're working through it. I guess I'd like to hear how that's going.
I think that might be something that we'd have Ryan address.
We've done extensive analysis on the pond and the dam break analysis. And, you know, like Deb had mentioned, the Burnsville lots are not in any danger. We checked elevations, things of that nature of lowest floor elevations. So none of the Burnsville lots are in any danger. We have notified the city of Savage based on our analysis. There could be further analysis, more detailed analysis done for that area. It will be up to, again, the developer and the city of Savage to work those details out. But we passed along all the information that we've completed at this time.
So that is a city pond, though? Burnsville City Pond?
Correct.
Would the city be concerned about any liability for damage even though it crosses into Savage?
I think that, you know, again, through the EAW that was completed and whatnot, I'm not, I can't, I'm not sure if anything's been, you know, done through the attorney or not. Maybe Steve can comment, I know he was involved with that.
I know, one of the items with that is actually that the dam that was put in was an improvement. So that helped to improve the water flow situation. One of the key areas that makes a difference is with the railroad bridge. That narrows the corridor where the water can travel. So it's kind of a bottleneck point that kind of creates that. But I'll let Steve also address that.
Briefly, the dam is annually inspected by the DNR and certified in its condition. And that's part of the city's liability process. We have a plan to maintain the dam, inspect it, monitor it. That's where our liability is if we don't maintain it properly and it isn't inspected properly. The issue for us is more of a concern of a catastrophic event. If the dam were to fail, this is a, that's a big-time event that would occur. We are a significant distance to the south with the lake. And the key is to make sure that when the lots are laid out in Savage, I don't believe that we're necessarily concerned either about the loss of life, but we're concerned with the flooding of basements and things of that nature. And so we pass along all the hydraulic information to Savage so that when they work with the developer on the design, they can ensure that there are overland routes for that water to disperse as it gets into that part of the development. And I think the key is the communication of that information because Savage needs to make sure they understand how that's going to flow across the property and that the developer can make sure that water gets across their property. So that's really the key to it, is that it's known. It's not unusual. Anytime we have a pond or anything in any development, we always have to have that emergency overflow plan. How is this water going to get out of this development without going into somebody's basement? So it's just on a little bit bigger case because we have the dam upstream. So it's not something that's not a standard analysis, just a little bit bigger scale. So Savage has indicated, at least to this date, that they're comfortable that it can be accommodated through their properties.
Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Singh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Deb, I'm a bit concerned about traffic on Williams Drive. Now, when the Burnsville part of this project is completed, that will add a lot of traffic to Williams Drive. Is there any plans to help divert or for Williams Drive to flow in, say, for example, Highway 13?
Yes. Yes, there are. As part of the EAW, I just wanted to mention, as part of the EAW, Savage was the local government unit responsible for the review. And Burnsville did raise the dam, the whole dam issue, the whole dam issue. We did raise with them. So they are fully aware of that and they have been for years. In addition to that, there is a, I don't know if this shows it or not, I don't think so. There is a plan that the city of Savage, Burnsville, I just can't get past this thing. I can show you in through here. Burnsville, Savage, Dakota, Scott County, and Mendot actually all agreed to. And that was to provide a collector street through, in the city of Savage, that was supposed to come, I wish I could get a better plan for you.
It was a Chowen Road intersection?
Basically. Chowen Road and it's the Savage, when the first Dan Patch Trail Plats came in, the city of Savage did require them to preserve right-of-way for a future collector road to connect Williams Drive all the way through up to Highway 13 at Chowen Avenue. They did not require the developer to build it, however. But it is preserved, it is right-of-way. And then at such a time as Highway 13 gets to a point where there is a need for that collector street to be built, then they will construct it. Unfortunately, that.
So it's in the plans?
It is in the plans.
When it need arises, then they.
But that's associated with Highway 13 as opposed to Williams.
Because, you know, when the Burnsville part of this project is finished, you'll add so much more traffic than Savage. Williams Drive would be a nightmare sometimes to get out of there.
Yeah. It already, I mean, it is difficult already to get in and out from the neighborhoods. And you have the neighborhoods that are kind of, that are cut off like that, it's kind of a double-edged sword. If you don't want access to your development, you don't have alternatives, you know, alternative ways to drive. So you get the seclusion, but then it's harder and there's more traffic on these other roads. There will be additional traffic. This will not all be developed at one time. It is a phased project. And the alternative, when the Savage part is under construction, one of the reasons we want to make sure that we've got the easements and the ability for this is to make this connection. So even if the Savage side doesn't develop or there are problems or whatever, that at least the city can make this connection so you will be able to get out of the development up Glenhurst into the Dan Patch Trail Plats.
Now is the time to raise these issues so that it's not hidden.
Correct.
The people are aware of it. And so if I'm going to buy in that development, you know, I know what I'm getting into.
Yes. You will also be able to get, once this connection is made, you will also be able to get over to Lynn Avenue and Savage as well.
Yes, I'm aware of that, yeah. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions? Commissioner Teary.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Deb, from what I understand, one of the deviation is, was to grade or grading steep slopes.
Yes.
Could you elaborate on that? What, why is that an item here?
Well, the concept PUD approved allowed them to have up to 59 lots. And they are only doing 48 lots. The concept PUD showed houses in those steep slope areas. And that's just one of the, one of the elements that needs to happen. So their development, as I said, it's consistent with the approved concept PUD. And I believe that was one of the trade-offs for getting rid of all of the apartment units and the potential impact that all of those units could have had with traffic, et cetera, through there. Those slopes are kind of in the mid-part of the project site. Right in through here. And as I said, there will be, this, about in this location is where Outlot A comes into play. So these slopes from here and further to the west are all within the Kramer Nature, or excuse me, to the east are all within Kramer Nature Preserve. So those will all still be maintained. But this part in through here will be graded in order to provide for the streets and lots.
My follow-up question. So from what I see in the development, a quite bit of grading and regrading required for this development.
Yes.
And if so, the overall concept from the city engineer is the actual slopes and grades from these lots go into the street or daylight, someplace natural? And if they go to the streets, from what I understand, the drive, the streets within the development, they all have curb and gutters, correct?
Correct. All of the contours and things will be graded out. There will be no more steep slopes in that area. So there'll be moderate slopes that you'd see in any typical development. Everything has been reviewed so that there is no drainage going at the homes or anything like that. Everything's being directed to the storm sewer system via the rear yards or a catch basin within the street. So there's no issue of drainage going over these steep slopes or anything like that.
Catch basin within the developments or outside?
Within the development.
And the cost of those catch basins would be by the city then?
Correct. It's typical of any development to capture the water and put it into a pond to allow for treatment and control runoff rates.
Thank you.
Any other questions this time? Thank you, Ms. Garros. I think you said that the applicant wanted to do a short presentation. So if you wanted to step forward at this time, that would be great.
Thanks, Grace, if you can help on the slide.
And once you get set up, if you could tell us your name and your address, please, that would be great. Who you're representing.
Good evening, members of the planning commission, city staff. My name is Steve Bona. I'm with Capstone Homes and Rose Bluff LLC. And we are located at 14015 Sunfish Lake Boulevard in Ramsey, Minnesota.
All right, thank you, then.
You're welcome. Rose Bluff, or Capstone Homes has been around building homes in the Twin Cities area for about 15 years. We build all over the Twin Cities, single-family homes predominantly. And we're one of the largest home builders in the state. And we've been very successful, even though it was just slowed down during the recession. Out of the recession, we've become very strong. And we just have been continuing to build nice neighborhoods in great locations. So we're excited to be here in Burnsville with this piece of property. And we look forward to moving forward with it. One of the things I wanted to mention, Deb, was that Rose Bluff LLC is going to be the entity for this project. And I believe that was on the application, but I could be wrong. So if we need to change it, it would be from Capstone to Rose Bluff LLC. Same address, same just entity for the project. As Deb mentioned, this is a very complex project. We have, I'm going to go quick here because she did a great job on the presentation. But we've got two cities, two counties, two LGUs. We've got overhead power lines, underground gas lines, et cetera, et cetera. There are a lot of things. And then the church has been great to work with, but man, it's been, there's a lot of paperwork going back and forth on making sure it all happens. So I'm helping to coordinate all of that with them. But all of this is coming together now and will come together at the time we record all the plats and the documents. The challenge to the project from the start was the previous concept plan that you had seen back a few years ago had a larger density on it. But that density really didn't provide for a great neighborhood layout. The steep slopes, as you were mentioning, were a problem. Not a lot of usable backyards or side yards. It was just a very challenged plan. And we never want to, because of real estate values, it's very difficult for us to reduce density. So that was something that we typically want to stay away from. But in this case, we directed our engineer and surveyor, MFRA, to create a plan that made sure that all of the lots were going to be usable and desirable in the neighborhood. So we ended up losing lots. We went from, you know, 59 to 48 here. But overall, I think they're originally 133, 130, 133, down to 105, including the Savage side as well. But what we have for a final product is going to be very nice, single-family lots. And when we put the houses on them, they're going to be usable. They're usable lots for families. We build for a lot of young families with children. And I think the layout will end up being very great. We pulled out, we initially had some lots over the wetland area, like the original, not in the wetlands, but on the sides, like the original concept plan it showed. We've removed those. And now the layout really works well. From the start, besides the steep slopes, the other, the other item that was very important to incorporate into the neighborhood were what Deb had already mentioned, the different park systems. So we have Kramer Park Reserve, beautiful amenity to the entire area of this development or of this property. We have, that's adjacent to us. And now we're providing some more parkland and dedication there. We have Hollywood Park that's in Savage, just to the west. And there will be trail connections to that park as well. So when we look at the overall site plan, we have sidewalk running along the roadway here. And then that turns into a trail, which will then connect to Lynn Avenue. So you have walkability from Lynn to Hollywood Park. You can go to Kramer Nature Preserve. And then on the other side of Kramer is the Sue Fisher Park area as well. Not only that, but the trail system that we've previously heard about tonight that runs down to Williams Drive and then the regional trail system. So we've incorporated, we've been working closely with city staff to make sure that the walkability is there. It's going to be a great amenity for the entire neighborhood, the way that it's laid out now. We plan to do, you know, with this one entrance along Williams Drive, we plan to do some more significant landscaping. This will be the one entrance, you know, there will be a second entrance exit down to Dan Patch in the future. But we wanted to have something that showed very well along Williams. So we have a landscape plan that we're showing here that'll show some, a small berm, tree plantings on top. We'll have the mulch beds there, some irrigation to maintain the sod. And of course, we're working with Ryan to make sure that any, that we're putting it on the right spot. And it ends up being something that works well for the city as well. But I think in the end, it'll be a really nice plan. This is just kind of a computer-generated entrance or schematic showing the entrance. This would be Williams here and driving into the neighborhood. The mulch beds, planting areas on either side. And then we'll have a row of screening trees running parallel to Williams. And that'll be very important. We might have, we might go more than two rows of trees there, it might be three. That'll be important to screen off the houses from a busy road. As Deb had mentioned also, we're obviously a single-family builder. This is one of our house plans. We've provided a number of house plans to the city. If you would like, you can, the nearest place that we're building right now is actually right down the road off of, on the northwest corner of McCall and 13 and Trout Run. And Capstone Homes had a significant portion of that neighborhood. We built out about half of it roughly. And if you want to take a look at some of the house plans that we would build here, there's some very similar houses in that neighborhood as well. We're actually just finishing up there right now. But we do plan to have another building partner or two in the neighborhood with us. And we've incorporated some. have incorporated some craftsman-style architecture here with a lot of variety of materials on the front facade elevation, and we've had great success with them. There were a couple notes. One of, one of the questions was about, or not a question, we were just talking about these switchbacks running up the slope. We have actually worked with Ryan to show where, what our response, where our responsibility begins and ends on the trail grading, and we would, that, those switchbacks are off of our property. The trail grading that we would be responsible for is actually running along the property line adjacent to the church, and so we can clarify that with him right away tomorrow, but we, as of now, we're under the impression that we're not doing the grading here on the other property.
That is correct.
Okay.
They are, the park director is asking for them to grade, just on their property to upgrade the trail.
A couple of questions about the trail running between the church here and our back lots. Yes, we would be doing some nice screening there to make those backyards very nice and as private as possible with the trail running so close. And again, tomorrow, we're going to be working closely with the church, trying to finalize these documents that are kind of the key to everything that we're doing now with them. Our project schedule, we're, our city council meeting at Savage, so we're a little bit behind in Savage. Our city council meeting here would be in June, and our city council meeting in Savage would be July 7th. And if we stay on track, then we would be able to break ground in July. And just a note, we have, the actual number of 65-foot lots is 16, 16 in this Burnsville side, and 32 lots that are 70 feet or larger. John or Ben, did I, is there anything else that we want to cover? It's good?
All right, thanks. If you'd just stay there for a second, see if there's any questions. Commissioner Singh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Bona, I'm very impressed with the plans. Now, this project has a long history, and it's very complicated.
Right.
Deb's presentation was about an hour, and to grab all of that and to put it in focus, it's very complex indeed. You know, I'm always concerned about livability. You can build the nicest homes, and when you sell to a few people, and they have complaints about the area, then you have difficulty in selling others. When I said area, I'm looking at like walkways, are there adequate walkways, sidewalks, crossings so people can get from one area to the next safely? Recreation areas. I thought the neighborhood was asking for some of that, you know, traffic flow. I mentioned earlier, getting out of, out to Highway 13. Those are the issues that really sometimes cause problems when you're trying to sell homes. And I've been in this commission for quite a while now, and those things have come up. In fact, they come up later after people have bought. So are you satisfied that everything is being done to take care of those issues? And I mentioned quite a bit, and I understand.
It is a great question and a great comment, and you're absolutely correct. These days, Ben and I, Ben is the owner of Capstone Homes, and we've been talking a lot about added amenity to neighborhoods. That is what, that is exactly what people are looking for. There's a cost, you know, benefit. You have to be careful you're not putting in too much, depending on, you know, what the values are. But absolutely, the trails and the walkability are number one, and that was, we were fortunate to end up with a property that already had the surrounding amenities there. It was just a matter of creating the connections, and that was very easy to do. So we have connections every which way on this project, and it doesn't necessarily need an amenity internally, because you're so close to this nature preserve for running and walking, and the playground is not far from here, and it can, you know, the children will have a place to go if they don't want to play in their backyard. And if they do want to play in their backyard, we've created a site where they have enough room to do that. So, but I do think you're absolutely correct.
You know, I realize all these amenities are there, but I have to ask the question, because we represent the people here, and we want to make sure that these issues are raised and people are, the developers are aware that people are looking for these things, and we want Burnsville to continue to be attraction for people to come and live, work, and do their business. So that's why we raise these issues. So, thank you very much. As I said, I'm impressed with the, with the plans that's presented by Deb. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else have any questions this time? Go ahead, Commissioner.
We, and I think this is probably a record for us from background information and conditions. So I just, I like to always ask the question, are you comfortable with all of the conditions as it was presented to us in our background from a standpoint that there are 22 of them?
Yes, we are.
Okay, thank you. And I would also like to echo, I think this is somewhat of a difficult property with a fair amount of easements. I think this probably has about every easement you could possibly have in it, and I think you've done a nice job of trying to make all that work, nonetheless of two counties, two cities, and everything that you've worked with. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. This is a continuation of the public hearing, and so at this time, anybody who has any comments, if they wish to step forward at this time, this is the opportunity. Welcome, sir. Would you state your name and address?
Yeah, my name is Joe Gilhar. I live at 13004 Judicial Road.
All right.
Across from the development there. I guess I had a question maybe for Deb on the trail that's going to go across there potentially. What, what the traffic and stuff on Williams, how, you know, if the railroad would ever give up there right away, I could see taking trail underneath the bridge. But what is the feasibility of trying to get a crossing there? There was a mention here a couple of years ago of a light of some type, you know, I don't know if it's a true stoplight or if it's just some type of a pedestrian-type light, you know, where would that try to get diverted down to Judicial? Would it come across at Court Place? And then once it does cross, is the sidewalk adequate for the trail system to continue down? Or would they be redoing, you know, would anybody be getting assessed for redoing sidewalks or potential trails down along that way in the future?
Steve, do you want to address that, or?
I think informationally at this point, there's, you raised all the concerns and issues that we have to look at with this trail corridor. Kind of separate from, forget the development for a second, the Greenway Plan identified the locations. This is a challenging spot in locations crossing. Anytime you're crossing a road that has 10,000 cars a day on it, mainly morning and afternoon, but still significant traffic, we're going to be looking potentially at some kind of a flasher system. This last year on County Route 11, we put in a flasher system at Echo Park Elementary School, which is an actuated one. The county put that in with us. That's one of the ones we're looking at. We also put one in at the hospital. So we're looking at some type of flasher system, probably not a signal, but the first thing we've got to identify is where's the best place for the crossing and the safest place? And so that is going to be part of an ongoing study. As far as assessments, this type of regional trail project would have no assessments to any of the adjacent properties. We probably would evaluate the sidewalks at such time they need to be reconstructed. Can we widen them a little bit? Are there things we can do to make it a little wider? Because biking on a sidewalk and having people walk on it is pretty difficult to do. So all of those things that you're talking about are kind of the next step. The Greenway's been identified in this area. How do we get through it? Our preferred option is still ultimately that the railroad would allow us to put something in that area. Unfortunately, they're probably not going to ever let go of it, but that would still be the ultimate option, is to be off of, you know, off of the road completely, so.
On one of your things that you had too, I think you had the speed limit on Williams at 45. It's 40, I believe.
Yeah, I think, well, transitions. I think there's a couple of transitions down.
Has everybody talked about slowing up the traffic on Williams to match what maybe the Parkway is at 35?
Well, technically, legally, the city doesn't get to set the speed limit. The state actually sets it, but what we can do is at that crossing, one of the things we've talked about is, do we change the road to actually have a concrete medium in a portion where you start narrowing up those lanes? And narrowing up lanes causes cars to slow down and give pedestrians an opportunity or a kind of a safe island to get to if they only want to cross half at a time. So those are some of the things we're going to take a look at option-wise.
So would they eliminate that right turn lane onto Judicial?
We would have, well, we have to look at all those things and see how it would fit with the new development entrance and all those. We haven't got that far yet in the analysis, but that's something the city engineer's working on right now with the parks director and then the county.
Okay, okay. I guess that was my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else, if they would have any comments at this time, please step forward. All right, seeing none, I would close the public hearing at this time, and look for any comments from commissioners at this point. Commissioner Teary?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a question for Deb from, from the city point of view, just a generic overall question. We are improvising, accommodating quite a bit of city ordinance with this development, setbacks, easements, lot size, trees. Is this going to open up, make us more vulnerable for future projects and developers that come in and say, well, just last year, you know, you guys did all of that, why are you refusing our proposal? So how do we, how do we control and tie our ropes here so we just don't run into this for every project and developer? I'm a little bit concerned about this, and make me a little bit hesitant for approval of this project.
Well, part of it is, this is a PUD, and they already have a concept PUD approval. So the council's already said, generally, the layout up to 59 lots is okay, and we're willing to give you setback and area deviations, et cetera, to accommodate that. From a staff perspective, this is something that we see as positive. We believe that they have really done the best job that you can with a really difficult site to work with. The other thing in Burnsville's favor is, we maybe have one other 10-acre, 12-acre parcel left to develop. I mean, we just don't have properties like this in Burnsville open for development. But the PUD status of it, there are benefits and there are deviations, and we identified all of the benefits and deviations in detail in the report, and we believe that when a PUD is done and it's tied to those, the findings of fact that the city council have really relate to this specific property, this specific PUD, and the circumstances and, you know, the whole ball of wax here, basically. So I do not believe that this is going to be a situation that is going to be replicated elsewhere in the city, and I don't believe that you need to worry about creating some type of, you know, new, new standard or something of that sort.
Okay, thanks. Isn't, Deb, isn't it true that basically this sort of relates back to the original change of plan to get rid of the high density to make it single-family, and so it was sort of the give and take at that point in time which laid this out with this kind of sort of concept in mind?
Yes, exactly. Exactly that, that's correct.
Okay. So that, they, they gave up that, those deviations back then, basically, so that they could make this single family and lower the density at that time?
That's correct. And actually, everything, with the exception of the 11 or so lots that have the 65-foot width, all of the other deviations actually are less in this plan than they were at the concept plan. So the lots are larger in area, they're deeper, there are fewer of them, those types of things. So it's, it's a better overall result, I think, than even the concept PUD was.
And from what I understand, we are doing some trade-off as well, too, to accommodate some of these deviations, which pay off.
Yes, that is exactly correct.
Thank you.
Any other comments at this time?
One last, Commissioner Singh. Chair, thank you, sir. I don't think we would can end discussion without first saying how pleased we are with the cooperation of the people from St. James Church. I know Steve mentioned about the paperwork that is going on between the two, but the first thing that they are willing to cooperate, and they have given up to get a little bit, the entrance to their church, the easement. So on behalf of the commission, I think with the chair, we would like to commend the people from St. James Church for their cooperation.
Thank you. Any other comments at this time?
Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Please do. Commissioner Brederich.
I move that the Planning Commission recommends the city council approval of the development-stage PUD and preliminary plat of Rose Bluff, subject to the following 22 conditions stated in our background.
Thank you, Commissioner Brederich. Second by Commissioner Singh. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That would pass 5-0, and this would go to the council June 17th, I believe.
Yes, that's correct.
At that time. Good luck. Thank you for, everybody for coming and listening and commenting, and good luck. The next item on the agenda is a continued public hearing application for 1301 Riverwoods Drive LLC has submitted a revised application for a planned unit development amendment to allow a pawn shop located at 1301 Riverwoods, Riverwoods Drive. Mr. Slania.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Commissioners. If you can give me just one second to switch gears here. We will get to, the next public hearing, as you stated, is Riverwoods Drive LLC. This is also a PUD amendment. The property owner, the applicant in this case, has requested PUD amendment to allow a pawn shop in the existing building, 1301 Riverwoods Drive. As any standard pawn business, they would provide customer short-term loans secured by personal property. They'd also be selling jewelry, electronics, tools, other retail products to consumers. The proposal does not change the size or the footprint of the existing building. The subject site, as I stated, is 1301. There is an adjacent building on the same property, 1351. These two buildings were constructed in 2000 as part of a planned unit development. At that time, the subject building was State Farm Office Building. This was a Snyder's Drug Store operating as retail. This building has now been purchased and occupied by the Islamic Institute of Minnesota. They have been there, I believe, since 2008. This building is vacant, has been vacant for quite a while. As I stated, it was office in nature. The land used to more retail or service-oriented requires the planned unit development. The site is three and a quarter acres in size. As stated in your background, it is zoned B3 PUD. Much of this neighborhood is zoned B3 and B3 PUD. And as a point of clarification, pawn shops are a permitted use in the B3 district. There are a number of operational requirements that are outlined in the city code. They are also mandated a one-mile separation between other like businesses. This site does satisfy that distance requirement. There was a location map included in your background, too, if we need to discuss that. The, as I stated, the, as long The, as I stated, the Islamic Institute was approved and took control of that building in two thousand eight. They do host religious assembly there as well as funerals. There are times that that site and that parking lot are very busy. Typically, funerals, when you, you really don't have a good handle on the amount of visitors to the site, oftentimes short notice. So there has been parking issues in and around the neighborhood. The applicant is aware of that. They do have experience with similar religious institutions at their other locations. Also, the Islamic Institute is aware of the application that's in front of you this evening and is aware that a tenant is looking at this vacant building. As Deb indicated with the last project, we look at PUD deviations, PUD benefits. The benefit in this case would be a, a long-term tenant for this building. If all goes well, there is a purchase agreement between the current property owner and the business operator. The operator would be the owner of the building long-term. They see this as an investment, again, their understanding of the current parking situation that's there. It would be very beneficial to have a tenant in this building. From a zoning standpoint, there are no residential land uses in the area. Pawn shops in general, as with retail, are relatively low-traffic generators. That will complement the traffic in the parking for the neighboring use. Staff is very supportive of, of the use for the site. Just a brief history on this, because of the, the change in use, the council did see this concept at their April fifteenth work session. It was something staff brought to them just to check in. They're, again, supportive of the land use and there are no concerns with that or the parking for the site. The applicant is also involved with current review of, for their pawn license that runs through our licensing department. They have provided the proper documentation for that and they are under review by our police department and other city staff to make sure that is proceeding as planned. There is a limitation on hours of operation. This is also based on the city code. They are not allowed to operate before nine AM or after nine PM as a pawn business. So these are just items to keep in mind as we're discussing this. Really, the big item I'd like to discuss this evening with the planning commission is the design of the building. As I stated, the, in two thousand, the two buildings were constructed at the same time. Similar brick and block were used, so they are very compatible. They are somewhat of sister buildings. There are different trim colors for both. The empty, the subject building has a green trim color. The Islamic Institute has a red. Otherwise, much of the brick and stonework is, is the same. The applicant had originally proposed a darker green for the top of the parapets, the awnings, the awning supports, gray ephesus added over the brick for the window surrounds and, and really trying to give it a identity connected with the business. Certainly, staff understands the, the need for the identity. It is a heavily-traveled road being on Highway thirteen and, and we can understand those concerns. We feel this design concept was just a little too much. Again, we feel they're two very appealing buildings as is. We'd like to keep the continuity between them. And staff, in your report, had included a number of conditions that I'll get to. Eliminating the, the graphics and the green accents on the garage doors, eliminating the, the gray paint and the ephesus, matching the paint color, reducing the size of, of the gears that we'll get to in a second, and limiting the amount of graphics to be consistent with the zoning ordinance. Staff's original recommendation was to include these conditions, request that the applicant return to the planning commission a couple of weeks with a revised elevation. The applicant is agreeable to most of these conditions, took the opportunity to revise their elevation so they could make an effort to satisfy the planning commission and advance to the council rather than coming back to the planning commission in two weeks. So this is the concept provided by the applicant. Again, the garage doors were eliminated of the graphics in the paint. The gray stucco was removed around the windows. The gears, these are actual, staff is viewing them as signage. They are almost architectural features. They are raised from the building. They're, they're raised as you would see individual letters on a wall sign. So they are standing out from the building a few inches. They are a few inches thick. The applicant is discussing illuminating them. If, if that was, if they were illuminated, they would be backlit rather than internally illuminated. Again, staff does see this as a, as a niche feature to the building. Our original, two original recommendations were reduce the size, which the applicant has, and also paint these to match the trim color rather than providing yet another color to the building. Try to paint them green to match the other trim that's involved. That's certainly up for discussion from the planning commission, how strongly you feel on, on that subject. As I stated, commissioners, the parking, the parking for the site is satisfied. The land use is compatible with the neighbors. It's a nice reinvestment into the property to have a tenant long-term there. There is, if I can jump back just a couple of slides, there is retail. As with any pawn business, there is a portion that is retail, dedicated to retail for the subject site. Most of it is warehouse. They are mandated by state and other criteria to provide storage on-site of, of their goods. Besides the warehouse or the storage spaces, there's a significant amount of office. All of this leads to a low parking demand, which helps complement the Islamic Institute next door. With all of that, staff would recommend the, the planning commission discuss the revised elevation. The, the two items staff had left were the green accent banding on the windows and, of course, the discussion of, of the gears. Is it pertinent that they be green? Does it fit well if it's a white feature that you see in the image here? Certainly, the planning commission has the ability to make a recommendation, advance it on to the council. Should you be more comfortable, you could also choose the, ask for revisions and bring the, the project back to the planning commission. Your next meeting would be June twenty-third. It is a public hearing also. It's a continued public hearing from the last meeting. Greg Daniel is here. He would be the business owner and operator. He may have additional comments to the planning commission, but I'll stand for any questions you have at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Slania. Commissioners, any questions?
Just a couple quick. Chris, in the background, it stated that trash containment would be inside the building?
Correct.
Currently, there's a building in between this building and the, the property owner next door that looks like it could be a trash containment system and the dumpster is just kind of outside across from the credit union. It's that little, small building.
Yes.
Is, is, is that trash containment or what, what is, what's our, what's our option for not having the trash container sit outside?
Certainly. The, actually, the trash container that you see sitting out is intended for this enclosure. That is for the neighboring business.
Okay.
Staff can follow up with that. I did see that when I was out there. The proposed trash would be contained within this building. The applicant is retaining those overhead doors. There, there may be products, oversized products that they receive on pawn or other things so they, they feel the overhead doors benefit their business. That also gives them the ability to, to retain that trash and recycling in the building and move it in and out.
Okay. I agree with the graphics. The few windows, and, and we have this in some places in town, the few windows that go into the warehouse, per the design, they're opaque and black, which I, I think adds it. But I was concerned, I, I would like to clarify what those look like because a lot of times I'll see the old stack racking or something in front of the window and it's not appealing at all to the exterior of the building. So the windows that do face the warehouse, I would assume the applicant would not want people looking into their warehouse, but those are opaque?
Correct. They're, we'll confirm with the applicant, but it would be some type of professional covering, I assume, on the inside of the window rather than hanging sheets or putting racking up or something like that to, to darken those. The applicants made it very clear that, again, this would be the first store of this brand. They want to put the, the right foot forward and present a nice product. I'm, I'm comfortable they would do that.
That's all I have, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Singh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chris, I think the background information does specify this, but just for the benefit of the viewing and listening audience, this application, the location of this pawn shop, pawn works is, does meet the requirement of one mile away from similar business, right?
That is correct.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions at this time?
I, I would like when the, the owner comes up.
Yep, we will ask him to come step forward as soon as I was certain everybody was done with Mr. Slania, so. All right, thank you, Mr. Slania. Mr. Daniel, could you step forward and give us your name and address first, please?
Hello, my name is, thank you, by the way, Chris, for that. And I should give a compliment to him and, and his team. They've been very good in working with my architects and providing feedback and, and this is an exciting project for, for me and for us. And, you know, they've been flexible and, and we try to be too. I mean, we want it to be really successful and, and be an economic and, and a community success. So my name's Greg Daniel. I live at forty-eight, forty-five Russell Avenue South in Minneapolis.
Thank you, sir. Is there any comments you want to make first or do you want to have us, ask some questions?
I don't have a lot to say. I mean, I tend to be more of a listener in this venue. I did hear a comment or a question, concern about the windows with respect to the warehouse area. And one thing that's very critical in, in this business is security. So they'll be professionally opaiced and then in addition, there will be a high level of security behind that. It would be constructed in a way that no one would be able to penetrate that. So from a standpoint of being concerned about what it would look like, it would, you know, it'd be completely opaque and it would be very secure behind it.
Thank you. Commissioner Singh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Daniel, is this the first business to be in Minnesota or just Burnsville?
This is a new concept that I've come up with and this would be the first store within this concept. I previously was one of the owners of a chain of sixteen stores that we bought, turned around, built, and then, and then sold a couple of years ago.
Thank you for choosing Burnsville.
Well, so far, so good. I hope you guys choose me.
You live in a nice neighborhood, you probably could have done it right in the south Minneapolis, but you came to Burnsville and we, we are glad you did. One question regarding the gears, I see it looks white. Is that correct? The color?
Yeah, yep, it looks white to me, too. So that was put together by my design team.
What does that mean to you? Mean, can you change it to bring it in, to match the other colors there?
Yeah, you know, I haven't thought through it quite enough. I mean, I had a much more elaborate design, to be honest with you, that I really was in love with and it had, it was a lot more painting and a lot more graphic and I thought a lot prettier than this, actually. But they consider a lot of that paint to be signage and also there's some rules with respect to painting over brick and exteriors, even though I've done research and I think he can do it pretty effectively. I understand the concerns that might set a precedent.
Yeah, they have a lot of rules, but they're all for the good of the, of the business.
And I, I get that, I get that. So from the standpoint of the colors, I mean, I do have, you know, pantone colors within my color scheme that we've come up with and, you know, white is a complementary color to those. And if there was a desire to change that, I would certainly be open to that. I mean, I want it to be visible, you know, so.
That's one of the things, one of the points that Chris wants us to talk about, so that's why I'm asking you.
Yeah, I'd be open to, you know, your, your thoughts on the matter, you know. I trust my designers, you know, I've got an opinion on everything, but they're better at that than I am, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions? Mr. Thierry?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As far as the black opaque windows, from the architectural point of view, you still can accomplish the, the opaque solid backing window perhaps with some bronze or gray reflective shields that, that can be covered. The window from outside looks like a window and inside is completely, you know, invisible. So it's just one opinion.
Yeah, there are architectural films you can put on them, you know, and I'm sure that's what we would use, something like that.
Yeah, the bronze or gray, that would make it a little bit nicer looking than just solid black. Black is a little scary, I guess.
We're not trying to be scary.
Yeah. Like, as far as the other schemes, the colors for the accent green, I personally have no problem with that. If the, if the owner would like to express with color their, to help their business, create more inviting kind of a signs, I guess that would be acceptable to me as, as, as long as we are within the city ordinance requirements. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
Mr. Do you, we've kind of went around in circles a little bit. Do you have any concerns over any of the conditions that were listed on the screen? And I, because Chris stated that you guys had worked together and had come to us with some understanding of those conditions, so I guess I wanted to make sure we clarified those.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, sorry, I ended up with the, I was just going to get the, the most up-to-date concept on the screen. And then these were the, the last two conditions.
So the, the six we had in our background plus those two?
No.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, it's just been revised now to these six with the...
These two?
These two.
Sorry, with these two.
Okay.
With the revised elevation and Mr. Daniel's cooperation, we're down to just these two.
Just those two conditions, okay. I just wanted to clarify that, sir.
Okay, so your question is, am I okay with these conditions?
These two.
Okay. Can you explain a little bit on number one, eliminating the green accent on the window glass?
Yes, on, on each of the storefront windows, there's a, yep.
The bottom of the glass?
Bottom of the, the, the window glass. That was staff's opinion. Again, the, the planning commission may have a different opinion or a suggestion as, as this advances to the council.
Yeah, I guess my thought would be... Yeah, I guess my thought would be, you know, I've obviously totally opened, I wanna, you know, I want this to, I wanna get this going and I'm excited about it, but I think it looks good. And from the standpoint of trying to have an identity, the less of my color I'm able to put in there, the less of an identity I create. If people told me, hey, it's either, you know, remove it or pound sand, I'll remove it, but I'd rather, I'd rather keep it, you know, be my opinion, but I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna, it's not a big fight or something. It's a personal preference, it's a branding thing for me.
Anything else?
That's all I had, sir.
I actu, my opinion is, I actually kinda like the green and my opinion would be if the, if you want sort of the same color scheme, to me, making the gears green as well sort of makes it all flow, so you don't have, you're not adding additional color into that and that's, and my wife would probably tell me that I have no color sense whatsoever, so, but that's just what I kinda think of. Then you have the brown and the green, which kinda goes together and I think the green would accent the gears to make it look good, but that's just my opinion and I can...
I'm with you on that.
I can be changed.
Chair, I concur. I like the gears being green. I think it's a very unique thought process. I like the name with Pawn Works and the gears and the green kinda continues across, so I would be in supportive of just the one condition then, which was number two, that the gears would be, I guess we typically not get into quite the minutia there, but some of that has changed.
I guess that's kinda where I was going, yeah. I, that's my opinion would be the gears and everything would just be the green color through and then it seems to blend really well and it gives you that identity from my perspective, but I'm not in this business, so.
Yeah, I guess we're a bunch of guys trying to pick colors here. But I, I mean, the gear on the right matches the gear color in the sign, I would hope, above the entrance, so the designer probably had a little thought process there, too.
Yeah, I think the way that they show it here, it's tough to see, 'cause it's a big building, so it shows small, is there's a green and a gray that are the two primary colors of the brand and it looks what they've done is they've trimmed these letters, at least in the sign, in the two colors, Pawn in the green and the Works in the gray, and I believe they may have continued it through on the gears, but, you know, I like the colors. Personally, whether it's a white or a green or a gray, I just wanted to be able to see it from the street and have it to look attractive and be, you know, draw your eye, whatever way I can do that, you know, I mean.
If the gears are actually the gray as opposed to what looks like white, you know, I was just against adding a separate color scheme into it with the green and gray, so.
What do these gears, what are the symbol of this? Is this...
Well, I just, I liked it as, you know, we're, it's a symbol of kind of, that the work, you know, Pawn Works, it's kind of got multiple meanings. It works for my customer base and also works as somewhere where something's created. So the gears just kind of fell in with a location where things are made or good things are created. It was kinda the idea behind it.
Are you okay with the gray accent, Ephes?
The Ephes, they told me to take that out, so I did, so.
Why?
I wish I could show you the first picture, 'cause I love that one.
I guess my thought, my thought is that, like, the second one where either the gears match in with the gray or the green, something to that effect.
Something along the lines that the condition would be that the gears match one of the existing colors on the building, whether it's gray or green?
Something along those lines.
Perfect.
Well, then it's not a striking. You want accent.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Daniel, anything? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
This is a continued public hearing and so anybody who wishes to comment on this is, please step forward at this time. Seeing no one, I'd close the public hearing. Comments or motions at this time? Commissioners?
Chair, I think we have settled.
Yeah. Usually, we fly with a recommendation. I guess I can attempt here, so, you know, without a rope, so to speak. I move that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the PUD amendment for 1301 Riverwoods Drive LLC to operate a pawn shop located at 1301 Riverwoods Drive with the one standing condition that the Gear Works sign matched one of the existing colors on the building. Would you like that differently, Chris, or kinda winged that, so I'm sorry?
I have issue with that, Chris.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I just, I believe if owner, if he desire to have a completely different accent color just to be striking and visible and throw audiences off guard, I have no problem with that, but I'm open to recommendations.
Your thought?
I would agree. In fact, I kinda like the gray a little bit better than the matching, or leaving the virgin stone there, so, but I do agree with the other things that were changed, the doors, things like that. It settled it down, looks a lot better.
But as of this concept, if this is accurate, then they could match that gray, he could have it as gray.
Gray or green.
Gray or green with that condition.
Well, but around the windows is the natural stone color that's out there today.
Correct.
And the first one was a gray coating painted.
Correct.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, I think you could, you can say, more specifically say, the gears to be, you could say, green, gray, or white, leave it completely up to the applicant or just green and gray and staff's comfortable with that and I...
I can revise. I'm okay with green, gray, white.
That stone is actually kind of a buff.
It is, it's a, it's a off-white, yes.
If we, green, gray, or white, then we don't need the condition.
No, we don't need a condition.
Leave it, take it off, let the owner decide what he wants.
Yep.
Is everybody comfortable?
I'm comfortable, yes.
Everybody else hold that?
Sure.
Okay, then, you wanna give it one more try?
You want me to go at it again? I move that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the PUD amendment for 1301 Riverwoods Drive LLC to operate a pawn shop located at the same address, 1301 Riverwoods Drive, with the conditions in our background eliminated.
Perfect. All, second by, the motion made by Commissioner Bradrick, second by Commissioner Thomas, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes five-zero.
Correct.
And this'll go to council June 17th as well, sir. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Let's see, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing, application for Burnsville EDA for a PUD amendment to expand the HLC park, oh, I skipped one, I'm sorry. Public hearing application for Crown Castle for a conditional use permit amendment to expand the ground lease area to add an equipment shelter to house wireless equipment at the existing cell tower site at 260 Civic Center Parkway.
Thank you, Commissioners. This application is a conditional use permit amendment. The pictometry that you have actually north is to the left-hand side of the drawing. Basically, what is out at the Civic Center Park is there is an existing hockey arena. There's also an existing parking lot and an existing warming house shelter. And the, or the tower that's existing out there and the current equipment that is there was approved in 2004 with the original conditional use permit and that is a hundred-foot tall tower. Just for note purposes, the site where the tower is and the ground equipment is approximately about 300 feet to the park boundary line and there's about 350 or so feet to the edge of the closest home in this location. The proposal is to construct and to, or excuse me, to expand the lease area to the south and to construct a small building. The lease area is proposed to be increased by 480 square feet. The building that is proposed to house the new equipment for AT&amp;T is a 276-square-foot building, about 11 and a half feet by 24 feet. The project itself, again, this is city property and it is within a city park, so there will be a separate lease agreement that will need to be negotiated and worked out for the lease area to be expanded and again, to install the building and they are also proposing to install some additional antennas on the tower, but the CUP tonight is limited to, can they expand the lease area and put up the building as proposed? What they would be doing is there is an existing bituminous path that gets you to the hockey arena. They do need to bring in some power and telco from the existing locations, which are up here, to the site. And so they would be proposing to do this via new easement. Part of that would cross the bituminous path. One of the conditions that is suggested is that they would need to replace or repair the path for the cut work in order to install the utility to the site. Basically, the existing tower in 2004, it was a light post. The city does have a policy for locating cellular equipment within parks and replacing an existing light pole with a tower is something that is an objective, so there are existing lights here. This is the tower and they are looking at adding some equipment. Colocation of antennas on an existing tower is also an objective of the city ordinance and policy, because we would rather have fewer poles with equipment on it than a lot of poles with just a little bit of equipment. So with every conditional use permit, generally, there is a requirement that colocation is desired for the other equipment. The Parks and Natural Resource Committee did review this application. They are looking to have a building constructed with materials similar to the existing warming house that's out there. This photograph just shows one elevation of that. It is a cedar-type siding, does have a pitched roof and the entry door is pretty basic, but that is the warming house structure and PNRC and the Parks Director are looking to have this building constructed of similar materials. That is a condition that is also provided. These are photo simulations. The one on the left shows what the site looks like now from across the street. The site on the right is a photo simulation, basically of what this small building would look like, again, located on the north side of the hockey arena and then just south, south would be towards the right. This is just another photo simulation, again, of what it would look like from the street and as you can see, too, there is an area about 300 feet deep that is wooded and also still within the park. With that, the conditions that are recommended have come from the PNRC. This item will go to the City Council on the 17th if the Planning Commission proceeds with taking action this evening. There are seven conditions that are identified. Number one, that the building design matches the existing building materials of the existing warming house in the park. Access and utility easements will need to be provided. The applicant needs to be responsible for replacing or repairing any damage to that path that we just discussed. The applicant will be responsible for maintaining fencing and landscaping around the equipment compound. One of the things that is proposed and that, I don't know if I actually, don't have the, I think this is included in your packet, but I don't have the graphic here. When this site was initially put in, the Parks Director at that time did not want any landscaping or fencing around this facility. Reason being is because they need to access this side of the rink for maintenance purposes out here, so they didn't want anything to interrupt that. The PNRC and the current Parks Director are looking at a shadow box type fencing, eight feet tall, to be located on the north part of the site and also, I believe, on the part of the west part of the site, just the area of the, that you can see from the street where the existing equipment is. The fencing would be screening the existing equipment. The new equipment is all proposed to be inside the building. Number five, the grading in order to build this and to put the cement pad down for the building may have some impact due to some existing trees, so PNRC had recommended that if any trees are taken, they would need to be replaced at full value. There are five potential trees that could be impacted, but they won't know until they actually get out there and do the construction, therefore, that is why that condition's recommended. Number six, there may be a need to install a short retaining wall within this vicinity on the east side. If that indeed will be required, the city wants to be able to have the opportunity to choose or be involved in the choice of the material and color for that retaining wall. And then the last one is just prior to construction, the lease agreement with the city needs to be executed and that would be an item to be reviewed and approved by the City Council. With that...
Thank you, Ms. Chair.
That was my question.
Any questions?
I just, I have one question.
Mm-hmm.
I know I spend a lot of time around cell towers and so I've learned a lot recently with all the ones that have been in front of us and I just have a quick question about the fence and the background stated that Mr. Schultz decided to not enclose the whole thing. Every other one that I've been to that we have acted on has had a fence all the way around it, the one at the water plant and the one we did in the park. And I just have a comment. I stood there and looked at it and I understand the situation, but it seems to me, and I guess I would just ask, have someone look at it from a safety standpoint, there is, you know, up aways, the permanent hooks that someone's gonna use to climb the tower, but given the apparatus that's around the pole and the product that gets to it, right next to a skating rink with a bunch of children, it seems to me to be very easy to climb this pole. Now, maybe it hasn't happened since it's been there, but it just, it struck me as somewhat of an odd situation that we did not choose to fence the whole thing in from a safety standpoint. That's the only comment I have.
Certainly. I believe that the issue is, again, being able to get around it for maintenance purposes, that that's the primary issue. You're right. I believe for the most part, these sites usually are fenced. That's something that, quite frankly, is usually desired more so from the companies as opposed to the city for safety purposes. Again, this has been in place since 2004 and there haven't been any issues. The applicant's proposal, everything will be enclosed in a building that will be secured for them, but I do know that maintenance and there is, there's a very tight space to be able to maneuver in through here and really, that is the reason that the fence wasn't installed in the first place. Everything will continue to be secured as is, so there won't be any changes with the exception of the new building and that will be secured for the new AT&amp;T equipment.
And the shadow box fence on the...
The shadow box fence, but that's primarily just for screening so that people at the warming house, yep, won't see it from there and then also a little bit from, so when you're viewing it across here, you won't be seen.
That's all I had, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Questions? Commissioner Teary?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chris, some of these buildings, existing buildings, been built quite a long time ago, right? And I think back then, the city ordinance didn't require full, full load building with a roof on to have complete footing foundation for support. Now, with the new ones, that's, I assume that would be part of the requirements, you know, pile, you can't do on the piles anymore, has to be complete spread footing and foundation to support these buildings.
I believe so. The, with the new construction, staff would view it as being applicable to all current building code requirements.
It's a small building. I mean, it's about the size of a shed or half the size of a garage and sheds can be installed, basically as, you know, on... installed, basically, as, you know, on an equipment pad or a concrete pad. Definitely, they do need to meet building code requirements for that, so if the building code calls for requirement for footings, they would need to then do that.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, Ms. Gears. Sir, it looks like you could answer a question.
I'm from Crown Castle, so I could...
Okay, please, please step forward. Give us your name and address, please, and...
Good evening. Cam Conroy with Crown Castle, 32960 Hillary Circle, Cambridge, Minnesota. The building would have full footings, two-foot-wide footings with four-foot walls and then built on there, so it's very secure, follows all the codes and everything in there, so.
All right. Any other questions for, all right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, so at this time, I'd open the public hearing. Anybody has any questions or comments, could please step forward at this point in time. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. And any questions or comments or motion would be entertained at this time.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I move that the Planning Commission recommended a City Council approval of the CUP amendment to expand the lease area to allow construction of an equipment shelter building at 260 Civic Center Parkway, subject to the following seven conditions.
All right. Thank you. Motion moved by Commissioner Singh, second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Thomas. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes 5-0, and we go to the City Council on June 17th. Thank you.
It's a take drive back to Cambridge. That's a short drive.
All right. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing, application for Burnsville EDA for a PUD amendment to expand the HLC parking deck located at 101 Travelers Trail West. Mr. Slenia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, last but not least, another public hearing, one more PUD amendment. The Burnsville Economic Development Authority, the EDA, the property owner in this case, has applied for planning unit development amendment to expand the existing parking deck in heart of the city. Keep in mind, the city operates both a parking ramp and a parking deck. The deck, which is the subject site here, is directly north of the Ames Center. The deck is not, does not provide vehicle circulation between the two levels from within the facility. We have a upper surface and a lower surface. There is no connection between those, unlike the parking ramp that is up the hill. The proposal is to expand the deck. The net increase would be 40 stalls. In the neck, the deck would move 61 feet towards Pillsbury Avenue. The subject site is zoned heart of the city, one PUD, as with the surrounding properties. Just a brief history before we get into the design. Back in February of 2008, the City Council chose to move forward with construction of the parking deck. That provided between the upper level and the lower level and the surface, or excuse me, between the upper and the lower levels, 329 parking spaces. That was following the approval of the Arts Center. There was also approval for the Mediterranean Cruise Cafe at that time, Nicholas Commons Park, and just general public parking for the HLC utilize this deck. The western edge of the deck, as you know it today, again, here's the Ames Center, here's the deck. To the right is north, just off the page is Highway 13. Here's Red Lion Liquor, and here is the gas station, I believe the Shell gas station now. This westerly elevation was unfinished in 2008, or when the deck was completed. It is precast concrete. There is no brick or metal flashing to it as there is on the other four sides of the deck. That was intended, that was done on purpose, anticipating expansion of the deck, and we're at this point now. Let me get to some of the other images. So here you'll have the Ames Center, the cul-de-sac sits right here, and the access drive to the upper level is here. Here is the existing upper level of the deck. Here is the proposed expansion. This is an existing staircase that is on the outside of the deck that it will be, become internal to the part, to the upper level. There's also surface parking underneath the proposal. So what we're looking at here is a, a single drive lane and two-sided parking stalls as part of the expansion. So you'll be able to connect here as well as here on the top level. On the lower level, which you see right here, you'll have an entrance point and an exit point with surface parking between the edge of the deck and Pillsbury Avenue. Part of the proposal also encompasses a pedestrian access from the Pillsbury Avenue and the surface parking up this incline to the north entrance of the Ames Center. As I indicated in the report, the architecture for the addition will match. We're looking at the same, same brick type, same metal flashing, dark metal flashing, so in the end, we're looking at an addition that doesn't look like it was ever not there originally. Everything will match up. You'll see on the west elevation, which is this center elevation, that will be finished at this time. Brick will be added, the metal flashing will be added. This is, this is, from staff's standpoint, the last addition that would go on to the deck, so we are finishing it as such. That was also a condition dating back to 2008 with the original approvals from the City Council. Just some numbers to keep in mind, Commissioners. The subject site is 2.33 acres in size. There is 78% impervious surface on the site. There are 329 stalls within the existing structure. The addition will add another 40 stalls for a total of 369 to the facility. The site has been planted. It was planted in 2008 with the original construction, along with the Mediterranean Cruise Cafe and, and the Arts Center construction. As I indicated, the building materials will match exactly what's out there today, so we're looking at a complete product when it's finalized. Some discussion that stemmed in the original approvals in 2008 was the amount of handicap-accessible parking that's provided for within the site. The, based on the amount of parking, the 369 number, eight handicap-accessible stalls are required by code. There are 16 within the two levels of the parking deck now. That 16 number will remain. We are not adding, but we are not eliminating any stall, so we are certainly satisfying and providing excess number of handicap-accessible stalls. The other item for discussion, one of the items in 2008 was the lighting design for the deck. There are currently six fixtures up on the upper level. They are not the best lighting product, and the expansion requires three additional poles. So the applicant, the city, is taking the opportunity to remove the existing six so that all nine are brand-new. All will be LED fixtures. Becoming more efficient is also providing a better product. The total height for these are 14 feet above the finished surface of the grade. There are a total of 61 fixtures in the lower level. Significant amount of lighting down there for security purposes. Those will also be converted to LED fixtures for more efficiency and a better lighting product. The original, if I can just jump back, the original design did not provide for exterior lighting within these surface stalls. Again, we weren't quite sure what was going to happen in the future, how large this expansion would be, what kind of development would go in. So with this development, we are, we're proposing five decorative freestanding poles that will illuminate the on-street parking along Pillsbury as well as the surface parking adjacent to that. Four will run along the property line, Pillsbury, and then, I believe I had this in one of the images, there is a light pole that's proposed in this area that will illuminate the proposed sidewalk. Again, this does not exist at this time. Since the original construction, the city has added quite a few on-street stalls along Pillsbury, and with the additional stalls to the parking deck, staff felt it was prudent to provide this connection that gets you not only to the Ames Center, but the Mediterranean Cruise Cafe as well as the park beyond. With that, Commissioners, staff is recommending approval. The design is consistent with previous approvals, both for the Arts Center and the original construction of the deck. It's against the HLC framework as well as the EAW that was done for the heart of the city when the first implementation occurred. I will stand for questions. We also have Project Manager Marcus Thomas from Bolton Make here. Marcus was involved with the original construction of the deck. Steve Albrecht is here, our Public Works Director, if there are questions that I can't answer.
Thank you, Mr. Slenia. Any questions from, Commissioner Terry?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chris, some of the recent parking ramps are designed structurally to add vertical levels. Is this deck designed, any vertical future addition, or this is basically the end?
This is the end, Mr. Chair Commissioners. Just because of the topography we're dealing with, it would have had to been designed that way from the start to handle multiple layers. The intent was always to grow it sideways or width-wise rather than up.
Follow-up question? Thank you. As far as the security, does it, does this deck equipped with any security alarm or camera or any of those equipments?
Yes, I am glad you brought that up. Commissioners, there are, again, with the additional lighting, staff feels that's a benefit to the security area. There are two staircases within, within the facility, one near the center, one on the northwest corner. Near to those are, we call them blue light phones, security phones. There will be no additional phones added with this expansion. However, additional security cameras will be added. I can't tell you exactly how many cameras are within the facility now, but I know there will be up to five additional cameras added with the expansion. We're also taking the opportunity to provide cameras that will help cover some of the surface parking that's outside of the parking deck with those, with this construction.
So this, so this deck is equipped with push alarm in case of, answer the situation?
I, I do not know. Steve, do you know what's involved with the blue light phones? I, I don't believe in it's, it's an alarm. I believe it's a direct connection to, to 911.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Slenia. Any questions for Mr. Thomas? Anybody would have? All right. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing at this time. Anybody that wishes to comment can please step forward. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing at this time. And Mr. Singh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think this project is much needed. You know, parking that, that place there can be a nightmare. In addition to the added parking, I think the upgrade of lighting that covers not only the parking ramp, but the side and the ground parking, that would add so much to the security in that area. I mean, I go, I use that place quite a lot, and from getting out there at night, you know, it's dark, and some, most times, there's hardly parking. You gotta go around to find parking, so I think this is a great project by the city, and I will support it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else? I'd look for a motion at this time. Mr. Thomas?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that the Planning Commission recommend to the City Council approval of the application by the Burnsville Economic Development Authority, the property owner, as applied for a PUD amendment to expand the HLC parking deck located at 101 Travelers Trail West as presented.
Second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Taheri. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0, and we'll go to City Council, I assume, June 17th as well?
Correct.
All right. I think the last item on the agenda is any updates, Commissioners, any updates? Staff?
The staff just has one. Commissioners, there was a draft agenda provided tonight. Based on the revised plans and the action, this evening will eliminate number six, so that will not be on the next meeting, but we'll likely have three public hearings.
All right. Thank you. With that, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Go move.
Motion by Commissioner Bradrick, second by Commissioner Singh. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much.